Hi, good afternoon. Can you guys hear me?
I would like to add temporarily close any or all schools that just that one word. Um buildings or other facilities as permitted by law. And then also add without the approval of the board. Permanent closures or any or all of these facilities must have the approval of the of the board. So if there's gonna be a permanent closing, it really should go through the board.
I'm sorry, what I wasn't clear on the last part of that language that you wanted to add. There is a whole separate policy on school closures in chapter three. So I don't know that that's necessary, or you may want to come back to that.
Well, since we have to follow the law, so.
Right, and there's so there's both statute and a separate policy that addresses.
Now, work flows can be in many different layers.
Close for the day.
Permanent close, close for the day, close for all day, please burn down. Shooter in the area. I mean, it could be, it could be anything, so. And now I think the board's gonna get together every time there's a.
Well, I know.
As an issue, so.
So it really because it covers by is covered by laws, that's.
Should be fine.
That captures.
That's fine, okay.
Right, is that it for chapter two?
President Straka, do we have agreement on Chairman, excuse me, um do we have agreement on the addition of the word temporarily?
What's the pleasure of the board sums up if you like temporarily.
Leave it the way it is.
Leave it the way it is. Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine.
Covered, then fine, we won't make any changes.
Because the word the word permanent. It's always gonna be reopened again, by law, we have to be open for students in school, so it's always gonna be a. Finite period of time when it's closed.
All right, hearing nothing else, can we move on to chapter three?
Um, okay, let's see. My notes gone. Now I put them in here and now they're gone.
A lot of this budget stuff appears to be statutory.
So Chairman Straka, members of the governing board, most of this is entirely statutory. Um, so I was primarily responsible for writing chapter three. It is supposed to be about the business section, there's very few areas in which the board has choices to make. And the chapter is designed to assist your um business services department and operating efficiently. And I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the policies.
Can you tell which areas statutory?
Sure. So honestly, there the the limited choices that were made. Ms Rodriguez gave input into you have a choice on overtime, whether to give compensatory time or just pay straight overtime and your district pays straight overtime, so we've made that choice for you. Um, and then there was one other issue, Vicky, do you know what the other? There was one other change that Ms Rodriguez wanted to see that we made, oh, related to um. You have the ability to, when people are getting reimbursed for expenses, to pay the daily rate that is published by the Arizona Department of Administration, and that's the manner in which you pay reimburse people. So that choice was made. So that's that's about it. When you're looking at chapter three. There is, it's really divided up into uh sections. The first section is all about the budget, um which again is all demanded by statute, how you publish the budget, how you adopt it. Um, there is a fund balance policy that you're just that the trust has recommended that your district isn't gonna consider yet. It may be brought to you later in the fall. Um, it's based upon the auditor general's request that districts have a fund balance policy. Um, there's the next section is about revenue, including bank accounts and cash controls. The next section is about expenses and payroll. Again, you've made the choice about the overtime compensation and that.
With regard to with regard to expenses and payroll. Um, paragraph one there, payroll. The boys shall handle the salary and benefits of employees should succeed.
Right.
We have the contracts every April.
But are we are we in the business of setting a hourly rate for a teacher? Are we in the business of approving what is recommended? For by HR and the superintendent and supervisor.
So certainly the certainly you would take recommendations from the district administration, but ultimately you all have the statutory responsibility under fifteen five oh three to set salaries and benefits for the succeeding years. I don't know if you do operate with the meeting for teams.
So they'll discuss it.
Yeah, we discussed it, Mr. Molina, and it it doesn't, how can I say this? Uh it's it's always been a flat across the board, so if you're exceeding, you get the same raise as someone who is new to the position and is struggling. Uh, we don't. Give you that.
Um.
So can I ask, what's the benefit of paying the daily rate versus actual expenses?
In general, if you are paying out actual reimbursable expenses, it's more of a pain for everybody. That's how I understand it. So I I know that districts are certainly shifting to paying the daily rate, which is permitted by your auditors. So. Um. Right, it's up to an amount.
The day, rather than turn and receive the receipt, having pretty an audit receipts.
There is one, um, we're kind of going through the sections, there is one section in three one oh nine. Um, it's, I don't know if you can pull it up, Luisa, it's my page uh thirty nine, where the board can make a choice about. Um, it is three one oh nine procurement.
Uh, page thirty nine.
Uh, it it's a little bit above where you are right there, Luisa, I believe. Um, page, I have, it's my page thirty nine. Uh, keep going above. Okay, right now, see the highlight? So um the board can make a choice on job order contracts. Um, you have a current, you have the ability to set that the administration, the limit for the use of job order contracts, which is a specific type of construction procurement, is one million dollars, and you have the ability to increase that to two million if you choose. Or actually, anything you want.
Well, exceed the two billion.
Correct, we can't, you can choose to, you know, the trust is put this option in there, but you could say three million if you wanted.
What's the situation in your mind that that would cause that, that we would use that for?
Uh, job order contracting is generally used for when you have like a series of specific things, but not like you're building a whole school. So you need someone to repair your roof, or you need someone to correct, right? Right.
Have more than a million dollar. Job order contract.
Who asked him, built this campus, that building, I believe.
We've been.
But yeah, I think you had to come back together, get us a floor, then extend that, because it went over a million dollars.
Most districts of your size have said that at two. But it's, you also, there's language in there that says unless otherwise specifically authorized by the board, so you keep it at one million, and if you have a recommendation from the administration to increase, you could do it.
Wouldn't you have to suspend that policy, though, to do it?
Pardon?
If it says a million dollars, would you have to suspend that policy to do it?
You wouldn't have to suspend it, you would just have to have specific board action approving. Exceeding it.
So we come to the board, it's a discussion.
Right.
Problem is that one million or two million dollar limit was set quite a while ago, and things have changed, as we all know. So we still need to have the tools to give our staff to get things done.
Change it if we need to.
Correct.
We'll still see as an expense, so we have to talk about this.
Well, if it was a, if if we, so if we increased it to, say we had increased it to two million dollars, and the northeast campus is one point five million, would it ever come to the board for approval, or it would just go through the consent agenda?
It would, the specific, so this uh this is a cap on what you can use this form of procurement for, but the actual jobs would still have to come to the board for approval.
Okay.
Well, what I was saying, that this wouldn't come to that.
What is administration's recommendation?
I would suggest two million if other districts have done it, you know. Especially against these possible construction.
Man.
Squad chains and.
Somebody today told me that I suppose it's going down, which I find.
This allows us to drop about four or two million rather than days, also coming back and that before approval. It goes beyond, so it's six one half does the other, but making two million dollars, you probably would have to come back.
We would have to come to the board, but we could use that kind of construction instead of RFP or something.
And in the environment we live in now, we're going to have changes to our building, things that we're going to have to do as we grow, add programs, change programs. It'll just happen.
So did we agree two million?
I'm okay.
Two million, okay.
One says one had been comment.
One, two million, one million, thirty six million.
No, uh, no, no, definitely not the thirty six million, can you hear me? Can you guys hear me? Hello? Hello? Can you guys hear me?
You're good with two million, sir?
Yes.
Stepped away.
Okay, we'll we'll assume you're good with it.
Um, the next area in which administration wanted to have a bit of discussion or input is on page um sixty three, um policy three three oh two. Um, and that's regarding transportation, uh West Mac. Um, I don't believe currently provides transportation, but the question from CJ Williams was to get ready for formative transportation partnerships. Is this a required, would you like to include this policy?
What number is it?
It's got three three oh two.
Um, I was just, I didn't envision executing transportation policy of moving students within the district to. Right now, we don't transport students, but as it relates to West Mac, it's only through the ad that we receive the authorization transportation grant paper Arizona. Once that runs out, then there's still obligation for the district to all. CJ, if I'm not mistaken, there's just some some statutory requirements that you want to have in place for while we're providing transportation now, correct? Because some of this really won't apply to us if the grant is gone. Unless the state legislator does something to appropriate additional funding for moving students from their home schools or spots to West Mac, then this really doesn't even apply to us. Now, district could offer transportation, but it's quite costly.
Yeah, that's why it says May.
There's no, there's no reimbursement.
Let's say May, right.
Is there a way to put in in more description that? Available, I guess that would be, because May is.
So like.
It is a proper legal term.
I I see here homeless students are entitled to transportation under certain rules, foster students. Are we obligated to provide them transportation? Or is that the home district?
No, we'd see that's are obligated for any transportation at this point in time, it's it's not.
Yeah.
That says May.
Right.
Says homeless students who are entitled to transportation under the McKinney Ventmo Act.
So.
Kinney Ventmo, yeah, but that says the district may provide transportation to all students.
If we if in fact, number two, enrollment student would be would be held accountable for McKinney Ventmo? If that student became homeless.
We work with a member district and they provide that, we have that going on all the time.
And then the district, it's.
That's where we don't get monies, you know, there's certain areas we don't get monies, we don't get monies in transportation or McKinney Ventmo.
Because that'd be their district of residence or their district where they they bound asylum. Or ten square. What about students that are in group homes? Same same thing applies, their home district would provide the transportation. Students who are, students who are in group homes, for example.
Well, group homes are a little different, uh because it's foster usually, and so that is not under McKinney Ventmo, because they, you know, they they're placed that way through the state. And so we have never provided, we've given bus passes when we have them, you know, because we do purchase those and give that to them, but other than that, we have not been able to provide transportation for them.
What do we purchase the bus passes out of?
Well, when it first started, we had, um, I guess I want to call it some summer school money that we had had for some years that was just coming to us, and now I believe, and I would have to go back and look, I think it's just out of M and O now that our bus passes come. We don't use a lot of them, I mean, we're not talking more than three or four hundred dollars, you know, that we're spending for bus passes, but we have been able, because most of our campuses don't have a bus bro. Really northeast, like a Shria Mountain Community College, there are only two campuses that really have a line that kids have been able to use it, but it hasn't been, it's it's just used rarely.
That's one of my barriers. So CJ, why why do we need this in substance, we don't really offer buses, I mean, this would be all homework. Like workers, if you're satellite districts. Yeah, so why would you want this to be in place for a reason?
The policy as as written here, I don't, I would not recommend that we have in in our policy, but I didn't want to lose the placeholder if the board wished to have a policy that referenced the district contracting with a third party provider to provide transportation to students. Um, again, it wouldn't be guaranteed to any student, it would just be the district may partner with a third party provider to transport students to their West Mac program.
So it just leaves it as an option. And I think that's a good thing.
Could we just use Mr. Williams' wording and have this policy reduced to one sentence?
May contract with a third party provider?
To provide transportation to West Mac's.
Yeah, I like that.
Maybe say district programs. So we adopt. What's, that okay?
Central, yeah, central program.
District central programs. Alrighty, change me.
I don't want to back up, but just as a side note, that the uh short term facility use that calls for us to annually adopt these, and I don't recall seeing that recently, so.
We do, we were, we've now added it, because we've noticed that that was missing, so you guys approved it um last December, and then we just did it in the, it was a consent agenda, so it was something presented to the.
It's the first year we've tried to pick the things that you haven't seen.
Sounds good, all right. Anything else? Just for anything else on chapter three? Under visitors in two oh three, did we have to do anything? Because we have things like the cosmetology school where visitors come in and get worked on by the students. Do we need something specific in there for visitors, or is that something?
So the visitor's policy allows you to develop your own, first of all, the three four oh one, the safety and emergency management plan allows you to develop security plans and procedures to protect state baby and to prevent unauthorized visitors. I would think that that is an authorized visitor. Um, so um, there's a requirement that says that visitors have to adhere to all legal requirements and obligations by the district. Um, there's a paragraph that says the superintendent may limit the number of visitors and the times when they're permitted. So I think that you're okay with that, um, with what you have currently. I think there's sufficient protection.
Okay. Anything else that's not statutory in here?
Um. The um. That you noted both the uh facility use requirements and, which is not exactly statutorily driven, it's, you have more discretion about that. Uh, so that that section, which is three two oh one, um, some of the subsections are more statutorily required. Um, and there's a whole section on records and technology use as well and insurance in this section. So we did limit, uh, there's in the K twelve setting, there's policies regarding elections. We did limit that for West Bank, just to the elections that you're permitted to have. So that was uh personalized.
In three one oh two, it references um collecting tuition for adult students and attendance of students who are residents of school districts who are not participating in district classes pursuant to those arrangements. Is this where we would want to capture language for students that are recipient of ESA? Is this where we would wanna capture language for students that are recipient of ESA's or STOs?
Absolutely, if you want to put something in there, so, um. So we've got that you can collect tuition for all adult students and the attendance of students who are not residents of the school districts. Um, we can add a sentence or we can add to that paragraph.
I think the same language would just be extended to recipients of the empowerment. Scholarship account and or. Student tuition organization scholarships.
Or students. Scholarships, accounts or?
Student tuition organization scholarships, STOs.
And I'm just gonna add it into the body of the. Paragraph, not its own paragraph. Thank you. From my perspective, Chairman Straka, there's nothing else that you would need to make a decision on. That I certainly available to answer any questions.
Any other questions on chapter three?
So we're down with all ninety-seven pages?
Yes, we are.
Well, both members keep in mind that we'll, we'll, we're gonna be continuing to review the board policy as we go along, so this is not. This is practically getting something in place by July one. Had mentioned something earlier, maybe last fall, but maybe the board might wanna take it out of chapter at a time. To go back and review that once again, as, 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 uh, you get a chance to settle up for July one, and that would be fine too. So, this won't be the last you get your eyes.
Have to re-log in. Chapter four. Employment protocols.
Yes.
So the district asked me to, uh, if you go to four, one oh one point oh one, the district asked us to include your specific. Return, retiree return to work policy, so that is included in this. Um, and Ms. Maze would like some direction on that policy. So I don't know if you want to discuss Ms. Maze, what you're looking for there.
Under four, one oh one point oh one, under the retiree return to work policy. I asked if the board could consider, cause it currently, it has become a, an issue. Um, what the leave accrual rate will be when a retiree returns to work with the district. Do they start back at the accrual rate that they left at? Or do they come back as a new employee and start at the lowest accrual rate? So I thought we could put that in policy, just have the discussion here and then put it in policy so that. We treat all employees equitably.
Currently, your policy talks about leave accrual being at the rate of a new hire. Um, and that they would receive salary that falls within salary range guidelines.
So we're talking about people who've retired, are drawing in, uh, Arizona State Retirement Compensation, so they're in a new dent essentially.
And I've seen it done both ways, um, board member Melina at the districts that I've worked at. Some districts have them start at the starting rate of pay for that classification. Other districts have returned them at their full salary when they come back. Um, I, I've also seen it where retirees come back at ninety percent or eighty-five percent. And that pretty much is up to the discretion of the board.
And what do we currently do right now?
Right now, they come back at their full rate of pay when they return to work. But when they're on phase retirement, they're at ninety percent.
But their full rate of pay doesn't cost us the same. As it did when they were here as a full-time employee, because there's taxes that are saved and. And, uh, retirement and so on and so forth.
Nice, do they still? They still?
Still gotta pay their retirement?
They don't, we don't have to pay them to retire.
I thought we had to pay four percent instead of the nine, twelve percent.
No, we pay the ACR, the alternate contribution rate.
Which is four percent?
It's ten percent.
Ten percent?
I'm sorry, it's actually twelve percent, twelve point one next year.
And what is that?
I'm sorry, no.
No, that's.
ACR is ten, the contribution rate right now is twelve point one.
Percent, not a whole lot.
You're correct.
It used to be more. It used to be a much bigger differential.
I, I was gonna say, it used to be like four and twelve, then it was so much more attractive. Uh, I would say if we had, I guess. If we've had everybody come back as a new employee to con- continue that, because if we switch now. Someone's gonna complain and say, I, I had to come back and I lost my, my ten years of service or whatever. Uh, and so maybe we just keep it the same.
We only talk about maybe three or four folks, it's not a lot of people.
Right, and that's all we have is.
You don't have that many, and some districts will reduce the salary so that it's kind of in line with what the ACR is. Because then that way, you're not over inflating the cost of the position to the district if you have to pay the full salary plus the additional ten percent. So some districts have backed our retirees down to ninety percent. Because you can't legislate, it's against the law to charge that ACR to the employee, it has to be paid by the district. So that's how some districts have gotten around that, but of course, my heart is gonna be with the employees and to, to bring them back.
So if you're in a. Um, just real quick, so just to clarify, so if they're an employee before they retire. They pay twelve percent and we pay twelve percent.
Correct.
And then when they retire and come back. We have to pay the ten percent, but we don't charge them. Why would the state? Never mind.
One, one of the things, and I, I kind of agree with you, I don't wanna take somebody that's been a, if we're taking them back. That means they're a valuable employee, tough to replace, that's why we want. Why in the heck would we wanna cheapen what we pay them? Now, we gotta be careful and protect ourselves from those payments, I, I get that. But to move them down, I couldn't do that, that, that's me, but. I'm, I'm an invested old guy, so. Uh, yeah, I agree with, just stay with the current practice.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, what Mr. Donovan told us is. There wouldn't be extra salary, it would be.
No.
It would be no cost to the district, the salary wouldn't, so as long as somehow it does, it's equal. I'm fine, what I don't wanna find out is, oh, when they go to ESI, it's costing the district more in salary than what?
For capturing the twelve percent.
Yeah.
For retirement, we don't have to pay that anymore.
I agree, apparently, Ms. Hayes, you met, you, you said there's only three or four employees that we're talking about right now. But as we look into the future. How many additional people are we looking that may be on that cusp of retirement, of course, across the next, say, four, five, ten years? That we may want to.
Yeah, we want like, yeah, we want that carried out there.
Right.
It's some positions, it's incredibly tough to fill. You know, uh. It would behoove us to protect ourself to be able to get those folks back. You were talking about a ten-year timeframe. I doubt if it would surge, you know, way up there. Might go from three or four to five, or six, but it also might go down to two. It's not, it's not a big deal, and like Mr. Straka, I agree, as long as it's not costing. The districts, because what we get back in value for people that know what they're doing is very, very important.
And, and if we were gonna visit it, I'd like to visit holistically, because the other part of that is, and I don't wanna sound cruel, but. The older population is our expensive participants in healthcare, driving up our costs, so. If we're gonna have that whole conversation, pushing them into Medicare at sixty-five, and I think we should have a holistic conversation to. Allow for the district to benefit from them, but also not incur substantial healthcare costs as well.
They'll, they'll wanna go on Medicare at sixty-five.
I, I bet there's employees here that are sixty-five that are not on Medicare, and they're on our insurance.
Not good.
And, and that's something I wanted to have a discussion this year, and nobody wanted to talk about, but that's something I think we need to move it forward.
Personally, I think that. Medicare and, and with a supplement. Combined is equal to or better than any medical policy I've ever had.
Well, we've got the same.
We're, we're paying a thousand per employee, and I would agree, I'd be much happier to pay the Medicare supplement at four seventy-one a month, and I know we're getting kind of off the agenda. And, and I think, you know, when, that's something we really need to address, because I think it's, the, the Mr. Melina, I think it's in the employee's best interest. Yeah. So I'm gonna, before I get the, the look again about getting off the topic on the agenda.
So the next, uh, the next item is on page forty-two, four two oh eight, the cellular telephone policy that the district has. And again, Ms. Maze was seeking input regarding this, uh, perhaps she can address what. Question she has and what she likes to say.
Thank you, Jennifer, um, I asked, um, to actually just, I know right now we're currently not paying the cell phone stipend. To employees that by action of the government board, but just in case it ever were to come back, rather than bring the policy back. Um, at that time, I had suggested that we just go ahead and include it. Um, we currently aren't using it, but I think the policy really outlines very well the acceptable use of cell phones. So I thought that might be a good idea to at least include it in the current policy, just in case it ever comes back.
My biggest concern about cell phones and teachers, it's that direct communication with students. And it always sounds good until little Susie accuses. Me of inappropriate action and there's no track record, and that's like the biggest thing of teachers. Their career is ruined, even if they're exonerated, their career is ruined.
So the, the sample trust policies do address, um, staff student boundaries of much more specifically than your existing policy system. Um, it's in, um, the policies that follow the code of conduct, so, um. And it refers to its policy four two oh two, um, and it refers to. Prohibition of those kind of, uh, behaviors by us, an adult that you would not wanna see. Um, there's also reference to, um, in four two oh two point A to. Uh, staff student boundaries, social media and cellphone use, um, referring to the Arizona State Board of Education's best practices. And the trust also has a form that you all can incorporate in which you can list. Um, the devices by which a staff member can communicate with a student, so for instance, on your. Platform that you have by your district email, um, but if you're going to be using your personal cellphone, at least one other adult has to be on it. So to outline that and to make sort of an agreement between the staff member and the district, um, is an option as well to address that concern.
So with this provision, is it also including, um. The superintendents of the schools and principals and.
Yeah, all district employees.
For them, wouldn't their usage of a cellphone be different than a teacher?
Um, well, we're talking about just with students, um, in terms of the boundary issue that Mr., uh, that Chairman Straka was talking about, but you're. Your two oh eight, the policy that we started looking at, um, deals with. It, the district chooses to give that benefit of employment again.
Cause I, I think one of our dissenting agreements, um, our disagreements was they use the cell phone. In my, so the, the teacher on the front line and how they use the cellphone, then there's superintendent, we go back to. If there's an issue, they gotta use their phone for everything. School starts to burn down, someone got a piece of metal in their eye or whatever, they gotta call emergency services or. Some, you know, there's billion reasons why they need to have a phone, cause they're running and managing that school. Um, but that goes into our disagreement, so, but for the policy.
Been ten, you haven't been on the board for ten years.
But, but the problem is, we take your example and we hurt everybody else. I can't, do we have any building administrators in here? I guess not. I, I can't imagine running one of our buildings without them having to use their cellphone. I can't imagine Ms. Maze doing her job without using a cellphone. I can't imagine. Luisa, thank you.
Ms. Brown.
Ms. Brown. And so they'll punish them. I don't care if you don't, you, you've always called it a cellphone stipend. Oh, it's something else, but in twenty twenty-four, in order to run. What are we doing, fifty million dollars a year budget? We, our people need to have cellphones, whether every teacher needs one, that can be a different debate. But to run the organization, Mr. Garcia is right, I can't imagine your guy not. I mean, yeah, it's sitting right there, mine's sitting right here, and for us to go on your example, which I've heard. For eight and a half years, just doesn't make sense to govern on the issue of one.
It's not, so there's two things, one is the teacher, and the other one is the overtime, there is. Fair labor, i- if an employee that's hourly files a complaint with the Labor Relations Board. They rule in the favor of the employee, there's no discussion, there's no case.
Either they go to the grocery store and one of their employees pass out, one of their, someone that they knows there is passed out, had to. Provide themselves, you can, you can jump up to many different layers. But there are, there are conversations and written policies and laws from our Department of Labor. On the uses of cellphones for staffs, or else, or else no one would be using it. If there was such a high risk, state of Arizona wouldn't have it, and you just saw me walk out with my cellphone from the state, you know, state call, so. That's, that's kinda the way it is.
But you're advocating for a separate cellphone.
So that's what I'm, I have two cellphones.
Well, for, for instance, up today, um, the district administrations. Uh, asked that you include the policy, and then the very vibrant discussion that you're having about whether you should pay for it. Can be held at a future time.
Yeah, yeah.
When you're, when you are considering benefits for staff.
What I haven't heard is, who's the employee that they. Before coming to West Mac, they did not have a cellphone, and they were required to get a cellphone for doing a job.
You, you'll find nobody that does that.
Well, that, then that's, a- and so it's very hard to justify.
Who needs it? Who's spending money right now on their personal cellphone doing school business, that's the first thing.
They have to use for school uses.
Yeah, so, so, so the better question is, who right now is using their personal cellphone, their plan, their money? To you, to do it for their job.
Let, let, let me ask this question.
Everybody uses.
Onboarding a new employee. Do you not collect their cellphone information?
Like their contact information or their telephone number?
Yes. Right.
What's the reason for that?
What's the reason for that?
Well, it's on the application.
Right.
And if they choose not to provide it.
They don't have to.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that they're using it for school business, not every employee uses a cellphone for.
But, because you have it and their supervisor now has it. Is there a policy that says supervisor cannot contact, contact that employee via their cellphone?
Well, it's not a policy, but we don't, as a practice, give that information to the supervisor directly as part of the onboarding process. Chances are if the supervisor has an employee's cellphone number, it's because the employee gave it. Not so much because it's required.
Something we could just ask for, but for the sake of the argument, I think we should keep good words at the plant.
Yeah.
But we're definitely gonna discuss this.
There's more discussion, so if, at the interest of time. If the interest of time, let's keep moving, that one needs more discussion.
Uh, so the next area in which, um, the district administration was looking for guidance is page fifty-one. It's your, uh, proposed lead policy four, three oh two. Um, we did work very. Um, we did work very diligently to um meld your existing leave requirements. Um, and benefits with uh the policy that is proposed. But on page fifty-one, Ms. Mays was looking for some guidance on whether accrued. But unused personal business leave would be transferred into an employee's sick leave. If eligible.
Correct, cause right now it's a use it or lose it.
Right. So do you want to allow that to roll over into an employee's sick leave?
I I would keep it use it or lose it, because personal time, people need time off. And what I worry about is everything, they keep rolling it forward. Time off is a good time to refresh, uh let's force people to take some time off. To refresh and come back more energized.
It's like forcing people to do anything.
Are you kidding? And I was, I, so my vacation at American Express was use or lose. And I'll.
This, right?
But I, one year I was able to take off December ninth to January second. And I came back really refreshed, it was the best three week.
Through the state in fifty years, right, takes many vacations, let's move.
So we just keep this policy, so we're going over the policy.
The the question is whether you wanna add in uh have the ability for the days to roll over. I'm hearing at least one word number six.
I hear Barbara saying use or lose it, Linda.
I don't agree with that, just so there's a record.
Keep it as it's, is so why, moving that language, so then the next. Um, the next question is on the next page, page fifty-two, let's scroll down to the next. Highlighted portion, please, Ms. Brown, thank you. Um, and the concern here um by Ms. Mays was um. That if an employee changes classifications and becomes eligible for vacation leave, she wanted to clarify that the accrual rate would become based on the. Effective date they became eligible and not on the original hire day.
Yes, that makes sense. It just means that she, you have to now keep track of multiple dates.
That's very logical, and we do that in the system.
I is, I think that's the policy now, isn't it, or is it just not?
No, it's not being, um, it's not in the policy, it's not clearly defined in the policy. So it is now.
Um, the next is on page fifty-four under bereavement leave and um. I don't remember what your existing policy is, but what the district administration is proposing that. An employee would receive three days of bereavement for an in-state death and up to five days for an out-of-state death.
And I believe that it's that's federal law.
No.
It's not.
It's a standard.
Uh, five days is standard.
That's what I thought. I just said have to be in there. I I know this is gonna sound like strange, but why does this have to even be in there? If I wanna take two weeks off, it it, they don't have to pay me.
No, this is paid. It's, can, have we defined what immediate family member is?
We did, we did, sure that uh.
Okay, because.
It's defined in the procedure that had was attached to the leaving policies, so.
Now, is that, does that apply uh country as well?
That would not consider that as.
It has to be three or five consecutive days, you can't pick and choose, like, I need tomorrow off, next Monday and the following Monday.
I mean, it's a case by.
To answer your your question, Chairman Straka, it really is a case by case because. For some families, they do a celebration of life versus something at the immediate death of their family member. So that might change exactly when they take the the leave, so.
I think you should be open-ended to accommodate.
Correct.
And it says up to three working days.
You can take a week, but you just don't get paid for the other.
So do we know, so um with this rule, this leave rule. Do we need to put in there, they can take up to a week without pay or or is that, is that applied?
That is a part of right underneath, but it says that the superintendent can extend the bereavement leave, it extended and be deducted from accrued sick leave. If, you know, so there is room, with a room for the superintendent to extend an unpaid.
I married my father, it took like a whole damn week to get. The funeral, the body, and then you had to get the, you had to get the death certificate, we just, it took. A long time, longer than three days. So.
But there's what, there's room.
Ms. Wiley is driving. She has. Stop at five thirty.
No more stories.
We're gonna finish this summer meeting, so whatever we don't do here, we'll do it.
We don't have anything else in chapter four that I have noted that the district administration was seeking input on, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have on this chapter.
Most of this was all boiler.
All the FMLA stuff is what we do now, change. And that's all federal law, so I'm assuming that's all boiler. I don't see anything else. After five. Uh, I just, you know, because of discussions the board has had recently, I just would like to point out. Ms. Mays, four dash four oh three is whistleblower protection. We take that seriously as a board, the administration I know takes that seriously, so I just wanna make sure that. Everybody knows that. That is out there.
Yeah, it's very extensive.
It is an extensive policy that is based upon higher ed policies, um, I. I wrote that and I wrote it to be very specific about what you do because frankly, practicing for thirty years, the issue doesn't come up very often. When it comes up, nobody knows what they're supposed to do. So, you know, everyone knows they're supposed to protect all sides, but um. Right, and not retaliate, but as far as how to hold a hearing, what you do, what the rights of the whistleblower are, what the rights of the accused are. We, I thought it would be important to spell that out, so it's a very specific, and I hope it never comes up.
Five one oh two is just the word being this in there, so it's. Any legal permission pressures, maybe?
Oh, is it between me and any?
Got it, okay.
Then Maryland has has disclosed with what we do already, correct, nothing in addition that we would want to add to.
Thank you.
Oh, one asset, they can add the. The verbiage consecutive business days to the bereavement policy. Consecutive rather than just three days, three working days.
I'd rather just leave it open.
That's why. I'm just curious why he's saying consecutive business days.
We, but we talked about it.
As is.
Um, okay, so chapter five. Um, chapter five is extensive, a lot of it is is simply required by statute. Uh, I'm gonna run through and see, um.
From five one oh three, first, do we have many students that are between the ages of six and sixteen?
CJ, you actually had some of these marked, or no, Stephen did, that they were, they weren't applicable to the district.
Right, so what I did was I took, and I can go back with your administration and re. Drill down into whether it is and is required, but I took the requirements of fifteen five ninety-three. And I went back and looked at every statute that is incorporate, as you know. You all have those authorization statutes in fifteen three nine one, et cetera. Fifteen ninety-three, it three nine three is the statute that lists out these parts of title fifteen are applicable to you. And so if I believe that the statutes that come underneath, like fifteen eight oh two, fifteen eight oh three, fifteen eight oh six. Are applicable to Westmech by that correlating fifteen three ninety-three, which, and so if it was. If it was incorporated, then I included it, so. Uh, I don't think you have the obligation to enforce student attendance, but I think you have the obligation to open your doors to someone who's. Of age, so, um.
And I mean, I would say the same thing about homebound or hospitalized students. A lot of our stuff is all hands on, if they're homebound. How would they successfully complete?
There's several leagues in a row that that Mr. Welch actually crossed out that probably won't happen. We just have to go through there and double check to make sure it's not statutory.
I I did not, uh, you know, I'm happy to have a conversation with him, but I, and we can, we can modify, so certainly. You know, if we look at fifteen one oh three, a child between the ages of six and sixteen, well, you're not gonna be educating six-year-olds, right? So we can start that by just saying. Students' parents guardian is required to notify the school regarding absences because they do that, correct?
Do, do we get notified?
Do you get notified?
They call, cause I get quite a few phone calls on my line telling me that they're calling their kid insane.
I I, you know, I I wanna fit it, you know, you all are a different animal, we wanna fit it to your needs, um. That's part of why you're looking at the trust policy, so we definitely wanna fit it and we can start there. What we did add was the sentence, the district will coordinate with its member school districts to report and address student attendance. So I'll take out the first line based on this input, but I think the rest of it are, is. And as far as the other policies regarding chronic illness, if you did have, I don't, you know, if you had that situation arise. You might need to coordinate with your member district to provide education. I don't, I don't know if you've had that happen, but. You may need to. So again, what what I'll do is I'll coordinate with Mister Welch on the ones that he had questions about, if that's all right, and.
So I would, I would also add, um, speaking about our COVID situation, how that happened. And how our students got impacted, how does that language in here as well, it's like a. So if a catastrophic event kept the kids away from school. Um, obviously it's not an attendance problem, cause we're at the reform exactly everything that we do. Um, how would that apply to our student enrollment attendance?
Diseases section covers that, I think.
Which section?
Infectious diseases, all section covers.
There is a whole section on communication.
We have twenty-five minutes before Ms. Wiley.
All right, I'm I'm looking through for any areas in chapter five in which it will start to requested input.
I I have a question for staff on five two hundred. Each classroom will have a flag, uh, the US Constitution and Bill of Rights on display. Do our classrooms have that?
Oh, okay, is it meant to talk?
I didn't know it was a requirement. I've been in class since I just don't pay. I I pay attention to the students, not my surround, not the.
There's some optional language on page eighty-four regarding student directory information. Um, it's a policy, it's, oh, it's actually a procedure, five three oh three D. So, this, this is um, uh, under the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, this is information that you would give out. Um, if, without consent, um, parents can ref, can. Find something stating they don't want you to give out directory information, in which case you have to abide by that, but otherwise, you would be able to give this information out.
Oh, does that mean like graduation program, when we have our. Our ceremony, each student has to approve their name being in there?
No. Because the student's name is directory information and therefore you don't have to approve that unless they've taken themselves out of that. So that, that, if you, if you didn't have anything listed, then you would have to get permission from. So. I don't know if you have any info on. Um, I would suggest you just keep the language that's in there. So I'll alter that, so I'm. I don't think you need the optional designation about what, where they're at in their class, um. And I don't think you need any additional optional information.
And I see two in yellow here on page eighty-four.
Right, that's what I'm suggesting that you just remove.
Okay.
We don't, yeah, we don't, just the brain.
There is a question that uh Mister Welch had, um, this is on page one oh five. Um, in the um expulsion policy. So again, I don't, I'm sure this is not something that you all have to do very often, if at all. But um, from my reading, you are, these statutes are applicable to Westmech students, so I'm in five three oh six A, Luisa. Um, and the question was whether the board wants to have a readmission procedure. Uh, following expulsion. So there's a sample here, uh, this is page one oh five.
Have we ever been in expulsion before?
We, no, we have not. And the reason, some of the thought process behind that. Here being that need that readmission policy, usually if we have a student that's long-term suspended for a year even. The student would no longer finish their program, so there would be no reason for them to be readmitted.
I was gonna ask, is the program has moved on and it's not like you could pick up?
And you have to have certain hours to get a certification, so.
I mean, even if they missed a month, they could be done.
So so Gerald, what if a student was a junior or one-year program? Are you asking, would there be a readmiss for them to reapply as a senior, to come back and finish that program as as a one-year program?
Yeah, so that could be a scenario where if a student took a one-year program. Yes, and then reapply their senior year for a different one-year program.
I have a few orientations that I've been to, when these kids come in and get accepted, first of all, they're thrilled they got accepted. Number two, they're given the criteria that has to be met for them to continue and get certified. And if they're gone, they're not gonna get it, so I don't know. Black and white thing, I mean, it's just like Stephen. Superintendent, Air Copeland County, he asked me, he says, well, what does merit, what does Westmech do on problems like that? I said, we don't have those kind of problems.
Yeah, and what I'm hearing, just real quick, Chair, if if they get expelled from aviation, let's say, and they wanna apply to plumbing. They would just go through the normal application process, they wouldn't need to do a readmission, and so I I still think that maybe this isn't. Relevant, because they'd never be able to come back into the same program.
If if you get expelled, I mean, would they even be eligible through our application or enrollment process? With that happening, whatever it might be, I mean, they might be eligible to reapply.
Right.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I would imagine the discipline on the rubric would probably augment them from. Getting in based on the scoring kind of rubric, but. You know, sometimes we have higher opportunity programs where we look at students with lower rubrics, so it doesn't mean. A student couldn't get in and, you know, that's where the campuses would then meet with the family and then they'd maybe put that student on a contract. Or a student success action plan, because sometimes a student could do something really stupid over here, but they got better, right? And so we can make them whole over.
And so we can make them whole over here, but there would be a lot of conversations in between before that happened.
I mean, we are talking about seventeen and eighteen-year-old kids, and they don't always make the best choices in life, but. I I think just leave the. I I think leave this section out and let them reapply and let staff address it however they would address it today.
Just make a point, expulsion of students is only. Were approved by the board, only the board can expel a student, so I think that's why this policy is there. Right, so what what I'm hearing is, uh, to, that we're removing the, we're not changing the expulsion to. Uh, Ms. Brown's point, but we are removing the read, the optional readmission procedure. We'll go ahead and do that. Okay, and then the board did have a a question about wanting to make sure that the personal privacy policy. That you had adopted was in, and that is in five three oh seven, which begins on page one oh five. So I just wanted to note that, um, as that was something that was important to the board and discussed last time. This is where we, that's where we put it. Uh, but the language is the same. And I don't have any other highlights. Uh, in my. Documents, so I think that in terms of. Um, trying to get feedback from the district, that was all the feedback that the district was looking for. I will get with Stephen, and I've got my card out here for you, so we'll coordinate and I'll make sure that we get. Uh, answers on the different attendants. Uh, before your next read, so we'll make sure that if there's any changes needed to personalize it for C T A that we make those.
And then I didn't see anything about mandatory reporting, did we?
The mandatory reporting is in chapter four, so we did, we didn't. Specifically address it, but it's, there's a very extensive policy on that.
Or two oh four.
That all just is state statute, though.
It is governed by state statute. Nothing else implied from, uh, in terms of asking for input.
And I didn't see anything, um. Alcoholism or now. Recreation marijuana, prescribed marijuana. It's also.
That's also in chapter four, um, there's a specific policy about. Uh, pro, there's a policy four two oh five, drug-free, alcohol-free workplace. And then there's four two oh six, prohibition of tobacco use.
And all forms of tobacco. There was a University of Texas study. That found a DNA link to alcoholism where it was hereditary. Do we have to accommodate anything if that?
So under the the requirements to accommodate, um. Someone who is, um, cat, who has the disability assigned of alcoholism or is an alcoholic. Um, only kicks in under the Americans with Disabilities Act, if they've been to rehabilitation and returned. You may have to make some accommodations for that as based upon physician's orders. That would be, um, addressed in your, it's not specifically called out, but the requirement to make reasonable accommodations is in. Policy four four oh four.
Very good, you're good with the numbers.
I don't know these by heart, even though I'm probably the only one in this seat who should, but. No, no, I've got it, I've got it right here.
What I don't think we've seen, that would just be helpful, is the district has. Let's call them the non-ASBA policies. You don't need to approve those, but if we could put those in a package, just for the board to be aware of.
Policies such as your personal.
Uh, all are non-ASBA policies, so policies we've written over the years, like. Sick time, vacation time, all of those, those are not ASBA policies, those are Westmech-specific homegrown policies. I I think that's the part, we don't need to approve those, but just remind the board of those policies.
So that should be pretty easy, um, whoever's gonna take that task, um, because they would not have copyrights next to them. Right, um, I'll, with the exception of the leave policy, I probably didn't pull the copyright off that, because you're following our copyrighted. Policies and procedures, we just put in your specifics, but you can pull it off if you want.
Could we put it as a procedure? Uh, what Chairman Straka is talking about, those different, like, leave policies.
We've, we've incorporated your leave policies into four three oh two, so they are. Currently either in that policy or a procedure.
Yeah, I think you just wanna be able to see all the ones pulled out and whether specifically put into the new trust balls.
Right, I just wanna make sure that we don't leave something behind. It's just good to call out, and it's like, this is what we approved, this is what we didn't need to approve, because. Westmech has policies and.
Already exist.
That already exist.
Chairman Straka, Vicky Hamper has reminded me that she sent to me a a list of all of the policies that you wanted to have included within your manual that. Were specific to Westmech, and so we have.
Yep. So I just wanna make sure we don't lose something along the way.
No, we, we. You wanted to see my little. And within your existing policy manual, you would know that they are peculiar to Westmech because they won't have the copyright. So like, for example, like the privacy policy.
Can we highlight that copyright just so we can kind of see it better or something, so we'll know, does it matter? Or I guess, does it matter if we know it's copyrighted?
No.
Mr. Williams, you had it.
Did we agree that the. Current exhibits would not be included in the new. Policy and procedures, we're just doing policies and procedures, not exhibits.
They have, the trust has, has exhibits or forms, yes, they.
So are 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 existing forms changing, or are those being im- embedded in?
So what I would recommend is that once you get the policy manual adopted. That administration go through and send to Vicky and Louisa or and Kathy the forms that you use. And then we'll fit them in to your policies. We, the trust does have a whole slew of forms that we've created that are samples or, you know, um. But your existing ASBA exhibits are do, will not carry out. So what we'd like you to do is really, a lot of the exhibits, in my experience, you all don't use, you know, but. Most of them are, you know, they're not, so you may have, we can also personalize them to make them a fillable form. So that it links to a fillable form, which is actually what you do use, so, um, but. So if you did exhibit, we can create it into a fillable form, and then it can link, and if you look at. Um, the trust website, it would show you what those look like, what, we can either put the form underneath your policy. Or we can create a separate button where they just go to.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, so I appreciate the opportunity to help, and well, I'm not planning to come back when you have to adopt, unless you all need me here. Right?
Think we need, I mean, I think we can. Answer the questions ourselves.
Okay, great, well, if you have any questions at that time, just write them, knock them down, and they know where to reach me, so. And I will get, uh, with your administration and work out any other final changes to chapter five.
Thank you very much. We did good.
Motion to adjourn, or actually, I think we could just stand adjourned, there's no motion. Any session.